Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. Alison Williams here. Hello, good morning.
Hi, Leah here.
I'm looking, do we have Inez and Daniel?
Yes, good morning.
Hi, Daniel.
Hello.
Oh, there you are. Wonderful. Let me see, do we have Hillary?
Yep, I'm here.
Great, thanks. So, it is my pleasure to welcome you to the session. It seems like we still have a couple of people dropping off and coming on, so I will give just a little bit of information about our session, but I will give it just a couple of minutes to make sure that everyone who is planning on attending is here. So let me see if I can, may I share my screen? Thank you. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Wonderful. Well, welcome to our session. We have the pleasure of having about two hours to discuss mobility of care. It is my pleasure to be your moderator. And I'm going to start by giving you a little idea of what to expect for our session. We have about 120 minutes and three speakers. We have divided that time into 30 minutes per speaker, which will include some time to have a chat at the end with each speaker, and also should leave us a little bit of extra time for a couple of things that we thought might be important. One of them is to allow our, our, oh, I'm going to say I with, I think the rest of the panel will agree, our very special speaker, Inez Sanchez de Maderiaga, to give us a overview and a history of the topic. Were it not for Inez, I don't think we would be here. We would not be having this discussion. So we want to give her a little bit of extra time to give us some context. I'm also going to save a little bit of time to introduce you to our committee, our Transportation Research Board Standing Committee, AME20 Women in Gender and Transportation, and I am here representing that committee, and we're pleased to bring you this panel. With the deference to Inez, I'm going to give it a shot at giving a little bit of an introduction to the topic. So mobility of care, and you will see in my slide that actually that name might look a little familiar. That's our Inez, who is with us today, was, was introduced by Inez in 2009 as an attempt to provide a tool to better understand the daily travel by persons who have care responsibilities. This includes travel from home and care, escorting others, shopping for daily living, household maintenance, organization administrative errands. As all of us have become very familiar with during the pandemic, there's a whole lot to be done to care for household and the people in it. And today's discussion will be centering on that. I want to take a second to introduce to you briefly all of our speakers. We had a planning session with the speakers and they introduced themselves so much better than I could have, that I asked them if it would be okay if they also included an intro, and they have agreed to do that. So I'm going to just give you a little bit of what to expect. As our, as I mentioned, our first speaker, who has brought us this topic truly, is an internationally recognized expert on gender research. She's a professor. She has been a visiting scholar. Her accomplishments are numerous, and she is here today to bring us the basics of the, of the, of mobility of care. Our second speaker will be Leah Ravensbergin. She is a postdoc right now, but will be joining McMaster University in several months as an assistant professor in the School of Earth, Environment and Society. Our next speaker will be Alison Williams, who is a full professor at McMaster and was thrilled to learn that Leah would be joining her. So we have, where not only are we having a great panel today, but we're introducing a new group of coworkers and colleagues. And finally, our last speaker, who will co-present with Alison, is Daniel Van Vagel. We're excited to have a student with us. He is entering his second year of his Master of Science in Geography at McMaster as well. I'm going to back up to the first slide where we talked about mobility of care. I mean, I'm sorry, the very first slide. And Hillary, if I could put you on the spot, I'd like to invite you to talk a little bit about our, the committee. And I also want to credit Hillary because she was the one who had the idea and put the panel together. I'm just the person who said I would moderate it, but we need to, we need to be thanking her for making this possible. So Hillary, please, she is, she runs our committee and wonderfully, and I'm going to let her speak for a moment.
Thanks so much, Vicky. And a huge thank you to all of our panelists. This is a really tremendous group of experts in this topic, and, and I'm so excited to hear their presentations. So, and for our discussion as a, as a group. Just a little bit about the Standing Committee. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Transportation Research Board, structured in a number of committees. Our Standing Committee on Women and Gender in Transportation is a very open, inclusive committee. I would encourage any of you to get involved, become a friend of our committee, and we will put the link to our committee website and how to become a friend. We have lots of wonderful events, workshops, programs throughout the year that's open to anyone. And our really focus is on any and all aspects related to women and gender. All aspects of research, workforce development, education, the whole gamut. So with that, I will turn it back over to Vicky to get us into the, the topic for today. Thank you, everyone.
Wonderful, and thank you very much. And I in turn am now going to turn it over to the, the woman of the two hours. Inez Sanchez de Maderiaga, and ask her to give us, if she could, again, an introduction to herself, introduction to the topic, and then her presentation. And we've allowed a few extra minutes for her presentation so that she has plenty of time for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Victoria. And thank you so much, Hillary, for organizing this panel, and also my co-presenters, Leah, Daniel, and Alison. Thank, thank you so much for allowing me to be here today, speaking about the mobility of care. Let me first explain very briefly, as Victoria has asked me to do, about how this idea of the concept of mobility of care as an umbrella category to describe the purpose of travel, urban travel, came about. This was in the year 2008. The Spanish Ministry of Transportation asked me to do a study on the main Spanish transportation service that existed at the time. Those were four services. One of them was made by the ministry itself, and it covered all the urban metropolitan areas of the country. And then there was one by the region of Madrid, by the Transportation Consortium of the Region of Madrid. And then two others that came from Catalonia and Barcelona. So I did this study to identify gender biases and gender omissions and gender issues and recommendations on how to better capture gender differences and gender issues into, into these data collection tools that were at the moment existing in Spain. And then when I had finished this work, this idea came to me that looking from, from a gender point of view, in a wider perspective, like applying a gender lens to what I had just, I had identified a number of biases. For instance, in graphical representations, in use of concepts such as household head and things like that. But then it came to me that many of the trips that were hidden under small categories in fact could be considered as under the umbrella idea of care, which is a key concept in gender and feminist studies and women's studies. Care is a concept that is used, for instance, as to identify all these activities that are not in the formal economy, and they call it the care economy. So I said, well, maybe we can call all these trips that people, mostly women, do for the, for the support of, for caring people who cannot move autonomously in the city, and also for the functioning of the household. We could give them a name, so to make them visible and to be able to quantify them, because when we the possibility of, of naming things is like a, a, a previous need for, for the existence of things. So things that don't have a name don't exist. I mean, but you cannot communicate about them. You need to name things. So it came to me, this idea, mobility of care as an umbrella concept that would allow to make visible and to quantify all the travel that is made, mostly of it on a daily basis. Many of it not on a daily basis, but with different kinds of regularity across the weeks or the month, or even the years, or across the lifetime too, because care tasks vary a lot across lifetimes. And, and so this concept, I, I, I came with this idea, and I published it in Spanish in 2009 in a, in one, in the main Spanish journal on urban issues, to that territorio. And then in 2010, I published in English, in a, a book for the European, for the Spanish presidency of the European Union. There was a special issue and a book on different urban aspects. And then in 2013, I published in two places. One of them was a toolkit sponsored by the European Commission with the University of Stanford, with John Schibinger, on how to provide researchers with, with analytical tools to integrate gender perspectives into different areas of research in technical, in scientific and technical fields of research, not social nor humanistic areas, but scientific areas like medicine, engineering, and so on. So I, I wrote a case study on transportation and mobility of care for this gendered innovations website that was published in 2013. And then I also published it in a book by Rowbridge. And then the Inter-American Development Bank, the transportation specialist of the IDB, saw this toolkit that was published by the European Commission, and they invited me for a Latin America-wide seminar in Mexico City. That was 2015. And they published it in their, in their transportation blog. This had quite a big repercussion in all throughout America. And then the IDB created a gender lab, and they have applied this concept in many countries, in, in Latin America, particularly in Mexico and in, in Bogota, and, and in other, other Latin American countries. And then it came into the knowledge of UN Habitat, and then they asked me to, to record what they call a, they have a series of global, they call them global urban lectures, some specific topics related to planning and cities. So I recorded a video lecture on mobility of care for UN Habitat, which has had also quite a bit of repercussion. And then in Spain, it has been applied in different places and so on. So it, it has become and then some researchers are applying it, like Leah has done this wonderful paper so that's how the, the idea came about. And, and, and it was this, this idea of, of, of naming and creating like a concept that would capture all this trouble that, and now has gone under the radar. And, and so the idea that giving name is a very important aspect of researching, and also a basic thing for changing policy agendas and the way we look about, and we go about defining transportation and policy priorities.
Thank you so much. Would you like to share your screen so that you?
Yes, I will.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop sharing. It's your turn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen already? Not yet. I don't know. You, you can see it?
No.
Yeah. No? Okay, so let me see. Nobody come, oh. Okay. I think I did before while you were still sharing yours, so I have to do it again. I think it, it should be.
There you go.
Okay, so.
Almost.
Let me, almost. I need to put it at full screen, maybe.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me, please let me know, how long should I have, like 35 minutes?
Yeah, you have 30 minutes.
Thirty minutes.
I will help you. I'll, I'll pop in the chat when kind of your, your, my, your markers as to where you're, where you are in time.
Okay. Okay. So let me first, a very brief mention to the UNESCO Chair on Gender that I am director of in the School of Architecture of Madrid. In Spain, urban planners are architects, so we are located, the planning, planning, urban planning, we are located in architectural schools. So in, in, in 1999, I created a research group on gender in urban issues, which in 2016 has been transformed into the UNESCO Chair. And we address all these areas related to the built environment, planning, architecture, housing, transport and mobility, service and policy design, all these areas. And then we do all the, all, all the activities that are typical to, for the university research, but also we do a lot of consultancy and technical assistance and expert advice and strategic advice to different kinds of organizations, public and private. So we, we work at this interface between research and, and implementation. We, we, we research, we produce research that is really part and integrated within the international landscape of research. But then what we like is to translate that into operational and practical tools that are able and can be used to transform the way we go about building our built environments in the field of how to get gender and women's issues into these very technical areas that deal with the built environment. So our research, as you can see, has been featured in, in the most very relevant academic publications, and, and it's, and, and it's a part of all these networks of which until now have been very, very reduced, very reduced networks of peoples that people, mostly women, academical who have been researching on women and gender into, into the built environment. So we also, of course, because we, we like to translate this into practical means for changing the way that, I mean, that public and private bodies, organizations, administrations, and professionals work so that women's and gender issues are part of their, of their work. We translate all this research into different tools, like here is the gendered innovations website that I mentioned before, but that we worked with the European Commission and the University of Stanford. Also, these important contributions with the Inter-American Development Bank and with UN Habitat. And then many different toolkits of different formats and kinds that have been commissioned by very different public governments at the local, regional, and national levels on how to integrate gender dimensions in the different aspects of, 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 of the built environment, from housing to urban planning at different scales to transportation. So this is the research project that I mentioned before, that was commissioned by the Spanish Ministry. And the idea was to identify the limitations of the way data were collected, factors that should appear in the, in databases, and recommendations. So when I did this study, I applied this methodology of how, what were the frequent ways that gender bias could, bias and omissions could appear in research. And I applied these sources of gender bias, androsentism, overgeneralization, or overspecification, gender insensitivity, double standards, adequacy to sex, feminism, or sexual dichotomy. And I applied in a systematic way this voice of identifying bias to all the elements of the four transportation ser- service that I had to analyze, in titles, language, concept, design and research methods, exploitation and interpretation of data, graphical representations, and so on. So this was a very systematic work, and I'm not going to show you all the results, but I wish, I will provide a, a general understanding of the gender key aspects or concepts to apply when looking at any area of, of or any aspect of the built environment or transportation systems. And they, please excuse me, excuse me once. Please excuse me. So all these gender concepts that are, that are relevant when looking at building, at building environments, gender stereotypes and social norms, gender roles, sexual divisions of labor, the double workload, productive and reproductive spheres, and the key concept of care that has already been defined, so I'm not going to repeat it. But then there are also two other very important aspects that have to do with gender violence and with universal design. So looking at the way we build cities, applying these important gender concepts, and the way we, we build cities and transport systems as part of, of the ways cities are built is based conceptually on the idea of functionalism that was developed at the turn of the 20th century through the Athens Charter that separated activities in urban space. And transportation systems is like the network that both unites and separates all these areas that are more or less monofunctional. There are these underlying assumptions on how this is, this has been conceptualized, because it's a personal experience of those who live the city without care responsibilities, in which paid employment is the main focus, housing is seen as a place for leisure and not for its care implications, and transport, as this, as I said, the means of linking the spaces assigned to these functions. There are these unquestioned ideas, often unconscious, on gender roles and sexual divisions of labor that are implicit in transportation and planning practices. This has been beautifully described by Doris Hyden in her books. The experiences of the needs and persons who assume care responsibilities are not explicit, and hence do not receive the same attention or priority in policies and plans, nor resource allocations or investment decisions. We have now about close to four decades of research on women and men in transportation. And there's a lot of empirical evidence on these differences between women and men in distances, transportation modes, access to private car, purpose of trips, time, et cetera. One of the, of the key results of this body of research, many of which, by the way, has been sponsored by the by the Women in Transportation issues since the late 1970s, by the National Academy, academies in the United States. One very important idea that came through this body of research is the, the idea of trip chaining. Trip chaining, which is far more common between women than among men, although there is some closing of this gap. And, and this implies that the, the movements of, of women are far more complex, because women go one place in the way to another place to fulfill these daily tasks that are needed to support life. Those, those tasks that you need to do, you, you go to, to work and you drop kids in, in, in the school on your way to work, or, or go and buy something when you come back, things, all that sort. So some of the issues that I identified in that research project for the Spanish Ministry was, for instance, the concept of compulsory mobility, which is used to jointly refer to travel, to work, and to educational facilities. And that, why is this compulsory? And bringing child children to school is not compulsory, I wonder. Because it's as much compulsory, and in fact, it's illegal. In Spain and many countries, it's illegal not to bring children to school. We, we don't have homeschooling. It's illegal in our country, for instance. So it's compulsory to bring kids to school, as much as going to work. We have a legal obligation. So, and, and also the, the, the hours are also fixed. So it's not that some of these trips belong to some peak hours and, and not the ones that are about bringing kids to school. So this compulsory mobility can be really questioned from a gender standpoint. Then the concepts of head of household and housewives, that many of these services at the time, today, they have changed. But at the time, were used in opposition and as mutually exclusive categories. Or the use of these employed people, students and rest as equivalent categories when analyzing travel purposes on weekdays, which is really a bias from looking at people from the point of view of, of people as workers and, and not as people who have, for instance, care responsibilities. So these were some of the gender biases that I identified. I identified gender biases in graphical representations, which are, these biases in graphical representations are also linked to the concept of compulsory mobility, because you see the queen that is used for education and employment is also put in the front and with volume and similar colors, so it looks much bigger than it is. So this is a very, it's a very, very basic use of visual distortions of, of data that the wonderful books by Edward Taft describes so wonderfully too. So this is also very important, that we have to, to be clear how, how the visual representations do not carry gender bias. So I came up at the end of this, of this project, I came up, as I said before, with this idea of, of the mobility of care as an umbrella concept that quantifies and makes visible these trips made by adults for the care of others and the upkeep of the home. So existing servants do not allow to quantify it within the overall mobility, because they have gender bias and omissions. You see in the, in the left column, quite standard categories for travel used in many transportation databases around the world. And under these headings such as shopping, strolling, escorting visits, and the black box of other. And what we really have are trips that people do, not because of personal reasons, nor for leisure, but they do those trips because they have to, they are obliged to do them, to care for others and for the house to work. We need to eat, we need to have things working, we need to pay bills and to, and to pay the IRS and so on. So we need to do all these things, most of which require going somewhere else in the city, and they require using transportation systems. So I made this hypothesis in, in the year 2013. This image comes from the gendered innovations website of the European Commission and Stanford. And I came with this hypothesis that maybe in between one third and two thirds of the trips that normally are focused shopping, visits, strolling, or other could be considered as care trips. Certainly 100% of escorting trips should be considered as care trips, because you escort someone who cannot move autonomously around the city, because this person needs to go somewhere, and you are responsible for this trip to happen. So and then using this very, very broad hypothesis, very really, very, very very broad. I, 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 I did this presupposition that maybe 25% of the trips could be, could be conceptualized as mobility of care. So this was just a, a very broad and way of thinking. After that, in the year 2014, with a student, Elena Zuccini, we made this, we made a specific survey specifically designed to be able to count the moment, the care trips, to, to, to count them. With specifically designed and, and specific questions that would allow to separate them from personal and from, from leisure trips. And we came up with these results for the population of 30 to 45 years in, in the metropolitan region of Madrid. So this includes people living in, 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 in the center of the city, but also people living in the suburbs. And the result was this, that maybe 29% of trips that this segment of the population was doing was related to care activities. And then the more interesting even than that was to verify that most of these trips were done by women. And if you see the distribution by sex, we see that the gender gap for employment trips is big. we see that the gender gap for employment trips is big. But the gender gap for care trips is much bigger, much, much bigger, so that most trips are done by women. So, we did also a bit later, for your habitat, together with a local organization in Nairobi, Kenya, a study on the mobility of care in the Matatu system. The Matatu system is a transportation, the public transportation system, which is these small buses that you can see in the picture below. And we found out in this study that women were doing one additional trip for care purposes, not short trip, but trips to the workplace. So, you see that in this city, we could infer from this result that the activities related to care are quite far away from the home in several instances at least. That this trip was done before or after going to work, that women travel longer distances, that the spatial scope of women's travel is not covered by one bus line, that it requires them to transfer, that a significant number of women do not travel because of concerns of sexual assault, and also that men are concerned about safety, but might not because of sexual reasons. So, applying the concept of mobility of care is a useful tool for transportation, first because it allows to improve the knowledge base because we can produce data of greater quality, validity, and relevance because it unveils the specific transportation needs of persons in relation to their gender roles and independently of the sex. You see, this is, I wrote an article called "From Women in Transport to Gender in Transport", because here, the mobility of care allows us to understand mobility patterns independently of the sex of the people who do the trips and understand the implications of gender roles independently of whether it is women or men who perform them, even if we know it is mostly women who do. So, it also allows to better explain the impacts of transportation systems on the gender roles and tasks persons assume in their daily living. And of course, it allows to improve policies, plans, and programs to produce empirical evidence needed to integrate care needs among the priorities of transportation policies, to design transportation systems which are more equitable because they will be more adapted to the needs of persons regarding their gender roles in their daily lives, and to contribute to economic development because it will facilitate the integration of women in the labor force through the reduction of existing gender gaps in the access to transportation, particularly for those women with young children. And obviously, as a result of all of this, to contribute to improve the quality of life of men and women. And we have also applied this research to provide inputs into policy through plans for sustainable mobility. Particularly, for instance, this one that we did in the city of Iruñ in northern Spain, I'll call the city of Pusol, in the east of Spain. And then, now let me show you the other work related to gender and transportation that we have done. In this case, for Aviv. Aviv is the Spanish operator of the railways and the train stations throughout the country. It belongs to the National Ministry of Transportation. It's a public corporation, and they have the competence to build and renovate all the train stations, even the high-speed train stations. So, they have, we have been working, and we are working with them in many different train stations throughout the country on how to introduce gender aspects and the idea of the mobility of care from the point of view of the quality and the design of spaces in the train stations, in their immediate urban environment, and also in the sections of the city in which the railways might go on the surface, applying these concepts that relate to orientation, accessibility, vigilance, consideration, maintenance, and visibility in different, in bigger and smaller stations, in more urban and more town-like or even almost rural areas. Another important aspect of gender in transportation is related to the urban segment in between the home and the train station. And here, the issue, you might, I'm sure you have heard a lot of this concept of the city of the 15 of 15 minutes. But 15 minutes is not the same for a young, healthy adult and for an elderly person or for someone who is accompanying kids. So, we need to see how this space is designed, what quality it has, and really, how people can go in terms of quality and also of safety from the starting point and end point of trips to the nearest transit station. So, this has to do with a technique that was developed a few years ago in Canada, by the way, in the city of Quebec and Montreal. It's called a safety audit or safety walks. And it's done with local women through different techniques of workshops and then walking with them in the city and with technical people. And through these processes, we arrive to understand what women need what women need for these spaces and the transportation that they are using to be safer and of a better quality from their user experience that is checked against technical knowledge. And from this work together, we produce recommendations. So, it's a very interesting technique. So, now let me just finish as an overall. Transportation is totally interlinked with urban planning issues, with the built environment. And gender is relevant to all the aspects of the built environment. And it's part of regional planning and other parts that, other work that we do that complements the work that we do directly with about transportation is work on planning. And we have been advising regional plans, we have been allowing land use legislation, urban plans, particularly gender impact assessments of urban regenerations. And one specific project that I'd like to mention is the article which is a huge redevelopment area in the north of Madrid that involves the construction of a very big transportation hub with a new CBD, many new housing units, several new subway stops, and so on. And we have drafted a gender impact assessment for this big redevelopment project, which is a source about Canary work in London or Latin fancy Paris. Construction is starting right now. We have been working in this program for around four years now. And the work that we did for this is publishing this to, in this toolkit, in both Spanish and English, so you can have a look at it. And so, as a summary of this, you can see that the different areas that we already have practical experience on implementation of gender dimensions that relate to transport to other aspects of the built environment and address all these different dimensions of cities, of city building and city planning, and the very different scales of plans and instruments. So, just to finish, I would like to mention that we are at this moment working with the Spanish Ministry of Transportation on their gender equality plan. And it's a gender equality plan that not only addresses the situation and participation of women in the personnel of the ministry, which it does, and also the employability of women in the transportation sector as a whole. But it also, and mainly, and this is the key innovation, and that's why they have hired us to do this plan, is that they are addressing gender issues into the substantive policy of the ministry across transportation, mobility, and urban agenda. So, thank you so much for your attention, and I will be very happy to clarify or expand on any issue that you might be interested. Thank you.
Wow, and thank you. One thing, Inez, I just want to mention. For some reason, it seems like when you move, we lose your volume. Not sure if it's because your microphone's going in and out, but we had little trouble hearing a few things, so there you go. Thank you. I see a hand raised from Allison. Allison, would you like to ask your question? I assume that's what your hand is about.
It was actually a clapping hand, but I have a question as well. So, thank you very much, Inez, that was fascinating. Really interesting to see the extent of your work. I'm just curious to know if there's been any research that has specifically looked at the mobility of care between children and caring for adults. So, the work that we do at McMaster, in my lab, for example, we're looking specifically at care work for adult children and elderly family, friends, and neighbor. So, what we've done is we've really specifically focused on adult care recipients because there's, you know, a whole body of research. In fact, there's full schools and programs and departments that focus on caring for children. So, we've been very specific about targeting adult care recipients. And I'm just curious to know if you've recognized that variation in the research that you've done.
I haven't looked specifically at this, as a specific part of care-related travel. But I know, and I don't think there is people doing that work, I don't think so. I do know that about two different groups of people who are looking at the mobility, at the mobility and the travel of women who are housekeepers. The women who go to work to another house, I'll be all those in English.
Yeah, house cleaners, yeah.
Cleaners, but they are not only cleaners. They go, very often, they go to take care for elderly people, they go to take care for children and to clean and cook.
Oh, so, right, yeah, so maybe paid caregivers.
Paid caregivers. So, this is a very specific group of people who, in some parts of the world, are a key source of women's employment. In Latin America, most women work as caregivers for others.
Right.
With no legal rights, no legal anything, and traveling four and five hours per day.
Right.
To get from their homes, because they go from the poorest sections of the cities to the rich areas. And these, and transportation systems are not designed for that kind of trips. They are designed for commuting trips. So, these poor women travel three, four, five hours per day. Incredible, incredible. There's a group of people, there are people who are doing research about these women in Latin America and in Turkey that I know, with very interesting results. Also, because, I mean, the way care is provided is very diverse across the world depending on the social welfare and the political economy of the country, and the level of social services, and the level of professionalization of caregiving. So, there are huge differences. And I think this is a very interesting area for future work.
For sure, yeah, I agree. And I think, just to add to that, I think there's a whole area that is opening up with respect to looking at transnational care. So, looking at, for example, caregivers who are coming from various parts of Asia and the Caribbean, for example, to provide paid caregiving in the industrialized West.
Exactly.
That's another really fascinating area that includes not only travel within communities, neighborhoods, and cities, but also travel back home for transnational care, right?
Transnational, yes.
So, that's another really fascinating area of research.
It is, and for instance, you see, now with the pandemic, in Spain, there was a huge scandal because of the deaths of elderly people in nursing homes. So, people don't want to bring their elderly to nursing homes anymore. So, now, finally, they should have done this 20 years ago, but they are doing now, changing the model of nursing. And so, there will be an increase of getting older in the home, which involves this kind of care too. So, there are very interesting things to look at about this. And all this care work is provided by immigrants. In each country, immigrants come from different areas. Here in Spain, it's mostly Latin American people because of the language, of course. And so, there are different origins. And then, there's also secondarily the issue of who takes care of the families of the women who are taking care of the elderly in the West, back home. It's their mothers, it's the grandmothers who are taking care of the young when the mothers are cleaning homes and caring for the elderly and children in the West. So, it's a whole change. Change, change of care. But at the urban level, the patterns of movement of these women is highly complex and difficult and dangerous.
Yeah, I was just on a PhD supervisory committee of a student who was looking at the movements of paid caregivers from Indonesia, working in Singapore and Hong Kong. And she's publishing her work, so I'm sure you'll see it in time. But the complexity of the travel behavior was really astounding because they were not only traveling for the paid care work, but they were also traveling for their personal, you know, personal leisure to meet other Indonesian nannies in public places, as well as finding their own food source, right? Their own groceries, so they could cook their own food. So, it was a really, really fascinating study. I'm sure you'll see it when it gets published. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both. There's just a wonderful way to, I started to say start our seminar, but I think that would undersell what you've done. You have certainly made the job of our next speaker is a little bit daunting, but I know Lea, our next speaker, is up for the task. I'm going to invite her to share her screen. And she will be sharing her research on this topic. Lea, the floor is yours. And you're muted. You're still muted.
Sorry, sorry about that. I lost, I lost control, I lost control of my mouse just as I shared my slides, so I couldn't unmute myself. Okay, I'm on a new computer. Can you see my slides okay?
We can. You're not in presentation mode if you wanted to be, but otherwise, we do see your screen.
Perfect, as long as you see my slide and not my notes, I think we're good to go.
Oh, we do see your notes.
You do see your notes, okay.
Well, we see where you would put notes.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that, again, new computer. So, thank you, thank you all for having me. When I was invited on this panel, I was extremely honored. And then I saw the other panlists and got even more intimidated and honored for being able to speak with you all today. So, my name's Lea Ravensburgin. I'm going to confuse you all because I am currently a postdoctoral fellow at the University of Oxford in the Transport Studies Unit. But today, I will be presenting work that I did while I was a postdoctoral fellow at McGill University in Montreal. And then, as Victoria mentioned, this January, I'm very excited to be joining Alison Williams and Daniel in the School of Earth, Environment, and Society at McMaster University. But don't worry, I listen and I watch all three emails, so you can contact me on any of those. And so, today, I'm going to be presenting a paper that I wrote on mobility of care. We had such a wonderful introduction to the subject that I feel like it doesn't really need to be repeated. But just in case people are just joining in, mobility of care was coined, of course, by Inez. I use the 2013 version because that's the English one I have access to. And it refers to all the travel that we do to perform care work, which is all the unpaid work carried out by adults having responsibility over children or others, as well as the activities needed for the upkeep of the home. as well as the activities needed for the upkeep of the home. So this is travel that includes to grocery stores, to run errands, to escort children, to escort older adults, and so on. And the reason that I got interested in in mobility of care really is that I love cycling. I'm a keen cyclist and my PhD research was on gender and cycling and trying to understand the gender gap in cycling. This is where, in many contexts, that have low cycling rates, like most Canadian cities, actually all Canadian cities, women cycle far less than men. One third of cyclists are women and two thirds of cyclists are men. And when I was doing a literature review, looking into why this might be the case, one of the key hypotheses put forward was this idea that women tend to do more household-serving trips or household-serving labor. They might be more difficult to do by bicycle. And when I was writing this up and I submitted that paper for review, I had a reviewer comment that really bothered me that said that, oh, it's not really labor, is it? If you're, you know, bringing your children around or getting groceries, that's not labor. And that is, you know, not that much to do with the actual paper. The paper did get published and everything was fine. But it really stuck with me that this type of labor that involves travel seems to be really undervalued in in transport studies. And that really stayed with me to the, until in about 2013 or 14, when I read Inez's chapter, I went, oh, this is amazing. This is the first person who's explicitly said, yes, this is unpaid labor. Yes, it does involve a significant portion of travel. And more than that, that this travel is undervalued and rendered invisible. Specific quote that I like the most from her chapter, she, you know, really explicitly says, this is a type of travel that's under-quantified, undervalued and rendered invisible due to gender bias in the way that we gather, interpret, analyze and visually represent data. And that really motivated me moving forward. The reason that this type of travel can be, you know, under under-quantified or undervalued is that, you know, on our typical travel surveys, we don't design them to capture mobility of care, which is, you know, I know it was just argued. They can get mistakenly considered to be made for leisure or personal interest. For instance, the Montreal Origin Destination Survey, which I used for this study, has one category for shopping, but it's not clear whether you're shopping because you have to, because you need to eat or your family needs to eat, or you're shopping because you'd like to and it's enjoyable and you're going on your spare time to buy clothes or other less less essential at times items. And they can also be too short to capture by typical travel surveys too, which just means that we don't see the importance of this type of mobility. So I was chatting with a colleague of mine, Juliette Courney, who was a master's student, and Akhmad Alkineidi, who was my advisor, about this type of mobility. And we we just got excited and went, you know what? We're working with the OD survey anyways. Let's have fun with it and see what is, what does mobility of care look like in Montreal? We have this wonderful work coming out of mostly Spain led by by Inez. Nobody is really doing this in the North American context. What does mobility of care look like in Montreal? So with that, we had these three big research questions. It was a real exploratory analysis. We wanted to know, okay, overall, like, how significant is mobility of care? We wanted to look into who does this type of mobility. And then we wanted to look into just how this mobility is done. And a lot of that is motivated by the fact that Juliette and I are both keen cyclists and had a feeling that, and based on past research too, that no, cycling is definitely kind of challenging to do for for care trips. So with that, in terms of methods, we use the 2018 Montreal Origin Destination Survey. So this is pre-pandemic data that we're sharing. Things will, of course, have probably changed, but pre-pandemic I'm sharing today. And this is the, you know, large travel survey in the across the Greater Island of Montreal area or the island Montreal beyond. Five percent of the population, I believe, gets surveyed on a travel diary type survey on where they've gone in the past 48 hours and how they've gotten there and how long it took and so on. And it captures almost 400,000 trips. And we had access to this data and we analyzed it to look at mobility of care. To do this, of course, there is no specific questions looking at mobility of care on typical travel surveys. So to try to have an estimation of mobility of care, we use the redistribution technique that Inez discussed in her talk before me. So because you don't ask directly about care, she hypothesized that approximately two thirds of shopping trips, a third of the visiting someone trips, and all trips with motivation of help picking up someone or accompanying someone would be mobility of care. She's also done really excellent work designing a survey specifically to capture mobility of care. And in that survey, she found that this approximation method is actually quite close to the actual sum of mobility of care. So we felt pretty confident using this method to understand mobility of care in Montreal. And so in terms of the first, looking into how significant mobility of care is, our first objective, what we've found is that, as expected, mobility of care are very significant. We focused in also, as a caveat, into adults between the ages of 25 and 60, thinking of this portion of the population potentially being even more in need of or doing more care trips and other portions of the population tend to have to take care of children as well. I would really encourage future work to also look into other portions of the population to to complement this now. But what we found is care trips on the island of Montreal, this means that after commuting to work, this is the most significant type of mobility that that happens. It's three times more significant. Trips for leisure. Really a big part of the significant vacation planning.
Lea, I think we lost the last minute. You cut in and out, so we don't want to miss anything, so please say it again.
I'm really sorry about that. So you missed this slide?
Just the last minute of you speaking.
The last minute of me speaking, okay. Where was I? Talking about how significant it was?
Yeah.
Okay. And now I can't go back to my old slide. Okay. I was, I can make a joke about how you think that's part of the pandemic. I'd be used to to online conferences. But it's really significant portion.
You know, I meant to thank you for putting your captions on the bottom as well. So actually, we were able to read it. So we're probably okay.
Okay, well, it's very significant. Twenty eight percent of trips that represents just under a million daily trips. So this is important and it doesn't get explicitly considered, was essentially what I was saying. Thank you for letting me know. Then we looked into who completes mobility of care. And again, as expected, what we found is this clear gender gap in the completion of mobility of care. Here on the graph, we have an orange trips that were completed by self-identified women and in blue, those completed by men. And we see here this very significant and relatively large gap between the proportion of this type of travel that women do compared to men. The other place where we see a large enough gap is in terms of trips to work. We do have 52% of men's trips compared to 44 of women's trips for commuting purposes. And that kind of flips for mobility of care where we have 32% of trips of women's trips for mobility of care compared to 25% of men's trips. So there is this clear gender distribution in this mobility. But we also compared how this changes across income, because of course the experience of being a woman or being a man can vary across other axes of identity. And what we found is another interesting differentiation in the distribution of mobility care when we think about income and gender. This graph here compares across income. Income increases as the graph progresses. And again, women are identified in orange and men in blue. And as you can see, is that the largest gendered gap in that completion of mobility of care occurs in low-income families. And families earning $60,000 Canadian or less per year. Sixty, we have a 6040 divide in men and women's completion of mobility of care. As you get into those higher-income households, that gap does reduce. However, it's still significant. Women are still doing more of this care even amongst the highest income groups. So we see that mobility of care is a question of gender equity, but it's also a question of class and gender equity. Both are important. We also looked into how the presence of children in the household can influence mobility of care. And I know this table is a little messy. But what we see here, if we look at the first columns, is across all incomes, who, how, what proportion of daily trips are made for mobility care based on the number of children in the household? And I'd like to draw your attention to just our two main trends here. There's a huge difference in the proportion of mobility of care trips done for households with no children and households with one children. The number or proportion of mobility of care trips essentially doubles once you have a child in the household compared to when you don't have a child in the household. The differences between one versus two versus three children isn't as stark. You do have more care trips when you have more children in the home, but that gap isn't as big. It doesn't double again with a second child. It only jumps a couple percentage points with each additional child. So the really big difference here is when there's any children or or no children. And we also looked into mobility of care trip characteristics. So how do people make these these types of trips across Montreal? And here what we found is that these care trips are predominantly done by car and on foot, and they're less frequently done with public transport or by bike, which is my original entry point into this topic. If we look here just at the bottom, we see overall the types of the trips that are made by different transport modes comparing care trips versus work trip versus all trips. And again, like I said, the big differences are when it comes to car and walking versus public transport and cycling. By car, you have an average of about 75% of trips are done by car on the island of Montreal. Eighty-two point three percent of care trips are done by cars. You have a greater proportion of care trips done by car. You see a much bigger difference when it comes to public transport. This is the really key place where people aren't doing much care trips by public transport. Fifteen percent of trips of all trips are done by public transport, but only 6% of care trips are done by public transport. We're going to compare that to work trips. Almost 20% of work trips in Montreal are done by public transport. Again, only six care trips. So there's clearly barriers to accessing community, mobility of care destinations or to using public transport to do mobility of care with public transport. Interestingly, we do have much higher walking for mobility of care. Seven point six percent of all trips in Montreal are done by foot. Montreal is a relatively walkable city. But and 10% of care trips are done by foot. So it's actually easier or seems to be more common for people to do care trips by foot than other trips. And finally, my entry point, my excitement when it comes to cycling, it's true that overall only 1.8% of all trips in Montreal are done by bikes. So we're dealing with pretty small percentage points. But work trips are slightly higher than that average amount, but care trips are almost half the amount. Only 1.1% of care trips are done by bike. So it is, there is, it is less common to use bicycles and public transport for care trips. We also found some interesting distributions, though, when it comes to mode and gender and income. The main one that I want to bring to your attention is when it comes to public transport. So I mentioned that public transport in Montreal seems to be used quite frequently for work, but not frequently for care. But if we divide public transport use by gender and income, we see a really interesting pattern emerge. It is true that across incomes, women statistically significantly use public transport more for mobility of care. But that gap is the biggest in low-income households, the lowest-income households. Those earning $30,000 or less per year. Not only is that gender gap the biggest of that income level, but also the use of public transport for care trips is far higher amongst both men and women in the lowest-income households. This can make sense if you don't have access to the car and you're reliant on public transport. You might have to do your care trips on public transport, even if you would prefer having other modes to use them. But it still shows that those lower-income households are really relying on public transport for care trips, whereas other income households aren't necessarily. And we also found that mobility of care are often completed as part of a chain. So we talked earlier in Inez's talk about trip chaining. Trip chaining is when people are making a trip and on the way stop to do something. For instance, if I'm on my way to work, I might drop off my children on the way. If I'm on my way home from work, I might pick up some groceries. Those are trip chains. And in the two examples I just gave you, that trip chain involves a care trip. And we found indeed that more than half of mobility of care trips are done as part of a chain. So people really do use this more complicated way of traveling to incorporate care into their into their trips. We also found that when mobility of care are done as part of a chain, it does increase the use, the likelihood of using a car. So if you're going to be doing a mobility of care trip, if it's part of a chain, there's a 7% higher chance that you're going to use a car for that trip. So we see some interesting dynamics here in terms of how the trips are done and what mode is used. And we also found that mobility of care trips are short. If we think of, this was calculated using GTFS routing. And we looked into how long it takes people to do work trips versus care trips. Sorry, all trips versus care trips. And what we found is that mobility of care trips on average are significantly shorter than all trips. For instance, if we look at the average trip length by car in Montreal, that's 25 minutes, but care trips are 16 minutes on average. If you look at public transport, the average public transport journey in Montreal is 42 minutes. Care trips are the average care trip by public transport is 36 minutes. So that's still a bit of a long public transport trip, in my opinion, but that is still shorter than the average average trip, considering all different types of of trip purpose. And I'd like to spend the last few minutes just talking about the implications of this study. So first of all, the main takeaway is that as as we would expect given Inez's work and as we would expect, just as, you know, using transport systems and traveling, the main takeaway that I hope people get from the paper is that mobility of care are significant. They're a really big portion of daily travel because 28% of trips in this case. So it's really important that they're respected and understood and planned for because they are important and they take up a lot of people's, a lot of people's trips are made up of mobility of care. I also think, you know, I mentioned that, a few people have mentioned that COVID might even make them more important. This data that I'm presenting was from 2018. So this is before the pandemic, before our travel behavior shifted quite a bit. But we know during pandemic that most people were working from home. And we know that even now, a lot of people are not necessarily going to go back to commuting the way that they used to. A lot of interest in working from home at least a few days a week. There's a lot of realization from organizations, people can work from home. So if commute becomes less important or continues to be less important as it is now, there's an even greater chance that mobility of care are more significant than they actually were in 2018 and the future, and they definitely are currently. So that just reemphasizes why it's so important to explicitly consider this type of travel and transport planning. And of course, mobility of care are a question of equity. It's not only important that we plan for them because because they're significant, but also there's this clear social division, who does this type of mobility? Specifically, we found that women and particularly low-income women do the bulk of this type of travel. So when we talk about gender mainstreaming policies for cities, I think this type of travel needs to be explicitly considered and planned for, for to have foster fair cities. I would also really encourage people to try to look into other differences we might find. I'd be particularly interested in thinking about how it changes across age groups as well, how these gendered or income patterns change across age as well. And there's other aspects of social difference such as race or immigration status or many others that could be really interesting to see patterns in this distribution of mobility of care. And I also really think that planning for mobility of care is important for people that want to encourage sustainable transport options. There's this big trend, and I'm sure a lot of the sessions at the BTR this year are focused on, you know, how do we encourage sustainable mobility? How do we kind of transition away from cars? How do we transition towards public transport, towards walking, towards cycling? There are some good news here. You know, we did find that in Montreal, at least, a lot of people do walk for mobility of care. But there is this higher car use for mobility of care. So I think we need to think through how we can encourage people to use public transport particularly and bicycles for for mobility of care. One other bit of good news, other than the fact that a lot of people are already walking for this type of mobility, is that we did find that these trips are shorter. And we often think of short trips as being easier to do by by public transport or especially by bicycle. If these trips are close to the home, is there a way that we can encourage more sustainable travel modes when these trips are completed? So with that, I'd like to just really thank my two other co-authors. And this paper is, was just published open access last week. So you can all feel free to read it. And I have a short summary of preliminary findings on YouTube as well. So I'd like to thank you all for your attention. I'd be happy to take any questions and I apologize again for all the technological errors.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? If we don't, I have a question, but I want to give the audience a chance. Let me get started with my, oh, Alison, are you clapping or are you asking a question? Thank you for the clapping.
I'm clapping. You know, you go ahead because I asked the last question. So you go ahead, Victoria.
Well, thank you for the clapping. I wanted to ask Leah and her opinion, why do you think mobility of care has gone under the radar so far?
Well, I think, I mean, that's a good question for everyone on the panel. I feel like people have been studying household serving trips for decades. And there's really important contributions have been made about household serving trips. What's beautiful about the, the coinage and the use of mobility of care is that it really brings them all together to show how they're significant. Make sure that they're not undervalued, that they're not rare trips that don't happen frequently, but they're really important. And I think that could be part of it. I think they might've gone under the radar because if you think of just shopping trips separately from trips to hospital appointments or trips to drop your children off at school, they don't seem like very important trips that we need to plan around. But when you bring them together, they really are important. And then of course, you know, I'd say gender biases are pretty key here. We all know that transportation planning is, or tends to be quite a male dominated field. I think a lot of questions about trips that women make often don't get considered with as much importance. And that can be a real, real bias in it. And that was a, you know, Inez was the first to really explicitly say that in her conceptualization, which was also what got me really excited about, about this topic.
Thank you so much. And Dominic has a question.
Yes, thank you for a great presentation, Leah. I'm also a professor for transport, beginning, new professor at Université Laval. And I was wondering, and it's a really particular question because the, the paper was based in Montreal. So we have very similar origin destination surveys done by the Ministerat des Transports for the Quebec City. Do you know if there are any plans to include mobility of care in the questions? So to improve the origin destination study, which is really good in terms of quality of the survey, but does not include mobility of care so that, you know, the COVID has made a big change as we know. It'd be interesting to, instead of using the previous method done by Inez to guesstimate it, if we could include it in the ministry's own research. Do you know if there's any plan? And if not, how do we make it happen?
Well, I, as far as I know, and I'm less, less familiar with the, you know, the Quebec City one. I was working with the, the OD, which is run by ARTM. There's no plans to, to change the survey. And I think it takes a long time to actually change these surveys. There can be like, I know the, the Transportation Tomorrow Survey, there was push for decades before they finally included questions on immigration status. Like you really need to push to change a lot of these surveys. And this is a bigger, more structural change. But I do know that at least the Origin Destination Montreal Survey, I've met with the people at ARTM and they're really excited about this work. And they got me to come in and do the presentation and they were like, yeah, COVID and care, let's plan around care. We need to think about how we're not planning around the commute. But then at the end they were like, but how do we actually do this? Oh, I don't know. That seems like too big of a change. You know, a small step at least would be to have two subset questions for, and, and again, I feel very intimidated answering this in front of Inez because I'm sure she's got way, way more thoughts on this than I even do. But at least considering differences between shopping for leisure and shopping for care would be one small change that could be made. But also I do think explicitly considering care is, is a great way moving forward. It is significant, it is important and it's bound to be more important in a post-COVID world, especially for public transport planning. And I think this might be a big difference between the work done in Spain and the work done in North American contexts. North American cities tend to plan public transport around work, 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 rush hour, let's reduce rush hour. But that really leaves people who are transport transit dependent stuck for a lot of these more challenging and difficult trips. So I highly, highly encourage you, we can have a chat about it if we want to do, do the same for Quebec City and try to convince the new staff across all to change their survey. That would be amazing. That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question. I'm going to invite Masria to ask the question personally.
Hello. Hi. Late night greeting from Malaysia. I'm Masria from Université Audimara near Kuala Lumpur. I just wonder, it's actually a very interesting topic because my team also been working on the gender mobility topic as well. And normally for Malaysian, I think it's actually depending on different countries because I think previously we have, we have already discussed about the implication of this mobility of care. And somehow for Malaysian, for example, one example would be our parents live not near to us, so we commute long distance to, you know, kind of supply for food or take care of them, I mean, sending them to, you know, to clinics or things like that. And the thing is, my question would be something related to any implication, especially after COVID, when people can simply access, you know, online. I mean, simply can simply buy things online. So do you think that would definitely be any implication for mobility of care, especially for grocery?
Well firstly, thank you for calling me. It's late at night. That's really impressive.
1:20 AM.
Thank you. I also, I think there's, there's such, this is such an understudied topic, you know? And I said, most of the work is coming out of Spain. We don't know much about North America. Well, I certainly haven't seen anything coming out of Malaysia or any, any Asian country. So please write about this topic. And I think that will vary across place, you know? I mentioned how public transport use is different in North America versus Spain. I'm sure there's other differences as well that will really impact mobility of care. But when it comes to your specific question about online shopping for groceries, I wonder, you know, we see that income gradient that I mentioned where that, that gender gap is lower in higher income households. Maybe part of that is in higher household, household income, higher income households, there's more of a tendency to do online shopping, which, you know, from experience is a little more expensive than going in person, at least in Canada. That might be part of it. But I also think that online shopping, my, my personal, this isn't based on research opinion, is that online shopping will never fully replace in-person shopping. People like shopping in person. You, you get better quality things as well. And, and then you also have to think of like that, that mobility of care is still happening. It's just paid. If you're doing online shopping, somebody's still making that trip. They're just paid and that's likely somebody who's, is probably the opposite gender trend. It's probably a man earning a low income. So I'm sure there's a lot of really interesting things that we could study there. But that would all just be me guessing in the future. So I hope people in this room will study these topics.
Yeah, like for Malaysian, that's a trend of having these personal shoppers. So that one is actually in trend right now, especially after COVID. Because people do not want to go out and get COVID infection.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to thank Leah. And for fun, I'm going to thank INES as well, who made this all possible. I think I'll just keep thanking her as I know we all did. Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. I'm going to invite Alison to share her screen and Daniel as well. And we will have our next presentation. Alison, Daniel, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody. And I too am very honored to participate in this panel. Thank you very much to Hillary and Victoria for inviting, inviting Daniel and I to be here today. And it's a pleasure to meet both Leah and Inez. Again, very, very honored to be in your company here today. So I think we just need to move to presentation slides, Daniel. So the, the paper that we're talking about today is, is really very much a team effort. Daniel and I were sort of the drivers of the paper, but it, it's really a group of academics which we'll introduce in the next slide. I just wanted to specify that this work is sponsored by the Social Science and Humanities Research Council of Canada and the Canadian Institutes for Health Research through a partnership grant, specifically looking at care-friendly workplaces. Next slide. So I mentioned the larger team. So here we have not only Daniel, but Anastasio Dardes and Darren Scott, both at McMaster University, as well as Nadine Sherman and David Swanland from Simon Fraser University, who undertook our scoping review. And this paper is currently under review for, in transportation research interdisciplinary perspectives. Next slide. So this is a bit of an outline of how we're going to proceed today. We'll start with our research question. And then we'll move to defining caregiver workers or caregiver employees. Then we'll talk a bit about the scoping review. And then Daniel will introduce time geography and the idea of a potential path area. He'll also review the methods and the results, introduce the limitations and the next steps. And then I'll move into presenting the conclusions, discussion and implications. Next slide. So the research question came out of a, a larger piece of work that really looked at the, the experience of caregiver workers with respect to managing the space and time tensions that, that exist when managing both paid work and the care economy or the mobility of care as we've learned today. And so in thinking about that, we, we wanted to explore how GIS and specifically the space-time prism methods could be used to better understand the lived experience of caregiver workers or caregiver employees. Next slide. So when we talk about a caregiver worker or caregiver employee, these are individuals who are both employed in the labor market and providing unpaid family care to a care recipient. And again, we're looking specifically at care recipients who are, who are adults. So really focusing on again that aging population. And we know that in Canada, for example, these caregiver workers make up 35% of the workforce. So more than one-third of all the workforce are providing some form of unpaid family care for an adult child, a spouse, an elderly family member, a neighbor or a friend. And what we know from that literature is that this is a very taxing job. So we talk about caregiver strain. And the 2012 Stats Canada data, specifically in our general social survey, showed that 19% of these workers experienced physical and emotional health challenges. Forty-eight percent take time off work or leave early. Twenty-six take a leave of absence from their job, 26% that is. Fifteen percent reduce their work hours. 10% turn down job opportunities such as promotion. And 6% leave the workforce altogether. And this is the problem that we're really working to solve in understanding the issues that we'll be talking about today, specific to these space-time tensions. Because the last thing we want is for women primarily to leave the workforce. We've made so much progress in having women in the workforce. When they do leave, they're leaving not only a paycheck, but often a pension, a set of benefits in addition to a, a social network and a sense of belonging and purpose. So when these caregiver workers leave the workplace, they're leaving very much behind, which impacts their health. And here on the right, we see a pie graph showing the 8.1 million caregivers in Canada with 75% of all those unpaid caregiver workers being employed at the same time. So again, of the 8.1 million caregivers who are providing unpaid care, 75% of those are simultaneously in the workforce. So again, this is a large, large population of caregiver workers that we need to be concerned about. Next slide. So again, as a geographer and specifically a health geographer with an interest in social justice, specifically women's issues and issues related to intersectionality, diversity and inclusion, we're really interested in looking at these tensions between not only the workplace, which as we've discussed already, can in fact exist within the home environment, but also the place where the unpaid care takes place, whether that be for example, in the community, in the care recipient's home or in a long-term care facility, for example, or a retirement community. And then obviously the domestic space, the, the space which, again, most of these caregiver workers have to manage with respect to again, the groceries and the cleaning and the, the management overall. Next slide. So to begin this overall program of research, what we did was we undertook a scoping review. And this, this was led by our colleagues at Simon Fraser University. And the question they asked is what GIS methods have been used to examine paid and unpaid care work? And we used a wide range of different clustered terms, which, which again, were basically synthesized to include care work, GIS and various demographic variables. And we had very limited results, only six papers. The vast majority which really looked at the distribution of potential unpaid carers, which was really done in another program of research that I led specifically around the compassionate care benefit, which is a, a benefit provided at the federal level for unpaid care workers providing palliative care. The research also looked at the time that paid carers traveled between locations. And that was primarily Anastasio Dardes' work. We've also found papers that looked at unpaid carers' mental health because that's usually what unfortunately shows up first with respect to care burden. And then there was some work that looked at the speciality of gender roles such as caring from a feminist perspective, particularly in the geographies of care literature. And then the caregiver worker travel behavior, as well as the space-time constraints that again, the same research team had been working on within my lab. But again, given the small number of papers, we, we clearly recognize that there is a gap in the literature looking at GIS and caring. And so an opportunity exists there for us to move forward. Next slide. And now I'll pass the torch on to Daniel. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you very much, Alison. And I first want to start off by reiterating what an honor and a pleasure it is to be here and be a part of this session. Now, before we get right into the methods that we used in the paper, it's important first to talk about one of the foundational concepts that informed the methodology. And that's the, that would be time geography. And time geography really sees its infancy in the mid 20th century with researchers like Haggrström and Lentorp. And they postulated a couple of pivotal ideas, some of which we use in the paper itself. The main one being the space-time prism. So the space-time prism, which can be, a diagram of which can be seen on the right of the screen, it's a three-dimensional measure of accessibility. And what it does is it incorporates both space in the X and Y directions, as well as time in the third dimension or Z direction. Now, it's typically not very practical to use in direct quantitative research. So instead, much research focuses on the two-dimensional shadow of the space-time prism, which is called the potential path area. And this is the space accessible to an individual, giving a starting, given a starting point A, their destination point B and a particular travel time budget. So point A and B must be fixed activities, these being rigid in start time and attendance, for example, such as a doctor's appointment or work. for example, such as a doctor's appointment or work even. And a typical measure of a potential path area is also the cumulative road length. In our case, we use this method and we use it in kilometers. So this would mean the theoretical total or sum of the length of all road links within the boundary of the potential path area that can be reached by the individual, given their space and time tensions. Also, here we can see a rudimentary example of a potential path area. So in this case, we would have the origin being at the blue star, the destination being at the red star. And the individual in this case was given 600 seconds as the travel time budget. And so all of the roads used in the network, this is an open street maps road network, all of the black roads visible on the screen, these would be accessible to the individual, given the origin, the destination, and the 600-second time budget. So the individual could be on any one of these roads within that timeframe and make it to their destination, given those spacetime constraints. So for the methods themselves, to start, we collected GPS data for 15 care worker participants from several municipalities within the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area. And these were collected over a period of about 12 months between June of 2017 and 2018. Together with this GPS data, participants were asked to cover travel diaries of about three to seven days, and they corresponded with the GPS track data. And so the diaries would detail each of the individual's trip's purposes, the start and end locations, as well as the travel time between these locations, or at least their best estimate. The travel diaries were then deconstructed for the creation of the PPAs. And each activity was then deemed checked to see whether it was fixed or flexible, fixed activity being rigid in start time and location. So anything involving care, for example, was deemed to be a fixed activity, whether that was a case of assisted transport, whether that was a case of bringing the care recipient to a doctor's appointment, for example. These were used then as the origins and destinations for each potential path area. Any other trip, or any other location, such as going shopping, for example, was considered a flexible trip in that it could take place at other times or other places. And the time spent by the participant in these locations was then incorporated into the overall time budget between fixed activities. So the fixed activities, the origin and the destination, were then geo-coded in the latitude longitude, and the overall time budget between these two fixed activities was computed in seconds and you altogether used as parameters for a custom Python tool, which created the PPA using the OSMNX Open Street Maps Network package. This tool worked particularly well for trips with different start and endpoints, so a point A and a point B, but it was not equipped to use, to create a PPA for trips that had the same destination as origin. For these trips, we used RTGS Pro and a service area analysis, where the total time budget was cut in half, so that the participant could theoretically make it to the far boundaries of the service area created around their origin point and still have time theoretically to make it back to their destination, which was the same as their origin. As for the participants used in the study, we ended up using a total of 12 of them, and this was due to a number of unique runtime errors associated with the custom tool and perhaps an ineligible entry into the travel diary that didn't correspond properly with the Open Street Maps network. Of the 12 in the sample, we can see that the sample was largely female-dominated, as well as dominated by those in married or common-law relationships. And finally, high income, or income was reasonably well-split. However, the, those with high education levels, that being a graduate degree or higher, dominated the sample as well. So as for the results, the findings of the study accurately reflect three types of constraints as defined by Hagstrom and time geography, which sum up the fixity level of travel behavior, that being the authority constraint, the capability constraint, and the coupling constraint. So for one, the authority constraint delineated by socioeconomic characteristics such as gender, these show that, in the case of race or ethnicity, that whites seem to have a higher average PPA, or non-white care workers seem to have a higher average PPA than their white counterparts. And this is more than likely a result of sampling bias, as most of the participants in the study were white. And this is confirmed by Dardis et al. from 2019, for example, who also found that the majority of respondents in a census nationwide survey were of European, Canadian, or mixed Canadian origin. Now, the PPA method, turning to gender, shows that females in the study have a smaller average daily PPA than male counterparts. Now, this is in keeping with several gender-based studies that emphasize the authority constraint as being the most critical of the constraints, and it directly, as it directly impacts the other types of the constraints, coupling and capability. Hanson and Pratt, for example, from 1995, they identified that women tended to lean towards part-time jobs and female-dominated occupations as a countermeasure to harmonize paid work with caregiving by increasing their temporal flexibility. Rosenblum and Burns, for example, from 1993, found that women's travel patterns are significantly different from men's due to defined household roles. So perhaps more interestingly than looking at it graphically, we can also look at these results spatially. And so what we see is the aggregation of the total PPAs for each individual to create their daily PPAs. And the maps on the screen represent the average daily PPA across various socioeconomic or demographic cohorts, or at very least approximations. So they're all over the general Hamilton area, and we can use them really to examine the spatial differences or size differences visually across the different cohorts. So for numbers one and two, we see a comparison across gender. So in number one, we see the female care worker's average daily PPA. And number two, we see a comparatively larger average daily PPA for male care workers. We can see that, for example, in number two, the road lengths actually stretch well past Hamilton and into Burlington, for example, and well into the rural areas. Now, so this would represent the average amount of road lengths or total kilometric length that a male care worker or female care worker, for example, could access on an average given day. In numbers three and four, we see a comparison across race or ethnicity, with number three being the average daily PPA for white care workers, whereas number four, we see a comparatively larger average daily PPA for non-white care workers. So in the study, the PPA also measured one characteristic of capability constraint, and that was age. And as expected, the smallest average PPA has been identified for those between the ages of 46 and 55. Most of the care workers fall between the ages of 45 and 64, and they're often referred to as the sandwich generation, as baby boomers or Gen Xers who simultaneously take care of children and parents. Dardis et al. from 2019 also found that most care workers that do assisted transport are between the ages of 45 and 64. The coupling constraint asserts that scheduling is swayed by factors such as external responsibilities. So in this study, this is evident in married or common-law participants having a smaller average PPA size than those with other marital statuses, that being such as widow, divorced, or single. And this is because those who are married or in common-law relationships will likely have extra responsibilities due to their dependents, such as children, senior parents, or both, as well as spouses' parents, for example. The PPA method also illustrates the participants with higher income, that being more than $100,000 for a household annually, and post-secondary education, such as a bachelor's degree or higher, have a higher, larger average daily PPA than others. And this is perhaps due to the direct relationship between education and income that typically reflect job stability and flexibility, as well as individual health. So additionally, a higher income could translate into greater purchasing power and better services and goods, such as access to premium care, such as a private care or nanny, as well as healthy food and the ownership of private property, such as a house or a car. Additionally, results also found that the majority of respondents have a larger PPA on weekends when compared to weekdays. Now, undoubtedly, weekends are typically more likely non-working days that enlarge the spatial-temporal window of opportunity for participants to focus on caring and domestic household tasks. So the literature suggests that weekdays, and especially Mondays and Tuesdays, tend to be filled with professional work. Now, the findings of the study identified that intense caring, that being 10-plus hours of care work per week, had the second-largest average daily PPA, whereas the least intensive caring cohort, that being less than three hours per week, had the second-smallest average PPA. And while these findings may initially seem contradictory or confounding, it's quite plausible that the intensive care may be indirectly related to assisted transport demand, such as running errands to the bank, visiting healthcare professionals, or visiting the recipient for emotional support, all of which enable the capacity for trip chaining. So the least care-intensive may be directly related to assisted transport demand that can only be done on a weekday, such as bringing the care recipient to the primary care physician, and consequently, the PPA is constricted on a workday, as is the ability to trip chain. So again, we can look at these spatially. So we see numbers five and six are a comparison across weekdays versus weekends. So the average weekday daily PPA is much, much smaller than the average daily weekend PPA. We can see that it stretches all the way almost into Mississauga, well beyond the borders of Hamilton, and well to the south in the rural areas of Hamilton as well. And interestingly enough, because these are approximations, the percent difference of the weekend average daily PPA is almost 15% smaller than the true value of the weekend's average daily PPA size. So this would actually be significantly larger than we can see on the screen right now. So the study was bound by several limitations, but it does offer some really promising future research and next steps. So the primary limitations of the study were example size, due to largely the difficult nature of travel behavior sample collection. Additionally, another limitation would be the different PPA generation methods. I mentioned that we used a custom Python tool for one type of PPA, and then a service area as the equivalent of a PPA for those with the same origin as destination. And finally, in the custom PPA tool, the method used was a single dynamic resize for creating the PPA, as opposed to the more detailed iterative dynamic resize method. And this was done to improve computation time. However, this iterative dynamic resize is slightly more exact. As for future research and next steps, trip chaining comes out as the most popular one for future research in this field. We've already talked about the definition, but in the case of care work, we could see how care workers, for example, combine trip activities like medical appointments, pharmacy pickups, grocery shopping, or even, and visiting their care recipients. And this could certainly influence the burden of their care work. So as for conclusions, several interesting differences are measured and visualized across care workers, looking at different demographic and socioeconomic characteristics, as well as type of day, such as weekdays versus weekends, and finally, the intensity level of their care work, all of which reflect the larger literature. So employing the PPA method, as I previously mentioned, the findings in the study accurately do reflect the three types of constraints as defined by Hagstrom, which sum up the fixity level of travel behavior. And finally, while the sample size is a little bit low for statistical inference, the results highlight the fixity level of travel behavior for the larger population of Canadian care workers, and consequently inform the relevance and significance of care-friendly workplace policies. So I'm going to pass it back to Allison, who will talk about final discussion and implications of some of this research. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Daniel. So just to finish things off here, we've concluded, again, in the written paper that, as was mentioned, geographical information systems examining unpaid care work is clearly in its inception. There's been some really fascinating work done by Mipou Kwan that looks at gender differences, but I think we have an opportunity here to really look at the care economy and specifically the mobility of care. And the PPA method represents an important avenue for continuing research, specifically related to care workers in Canada and around the world, as it has a wonderful ability to represent both quantitatively and visually the accessibility differences across various population groups, defined by, again, demographic variables and day of the week and intensity of caregiving, and consequently fills a gap in our understanding, particularly around, again, these spacetime tensions. And better understanding these tensions experienced by care workers allows us to better inform policy and program interventions, such as, for example, care-friendly workplaces, which are workplaces that are set up to best accommodate the success of care workers being able to best balance their paid labor with their unpaid care work. And such sort of accommodations include flex work, shared work, a range of other accommodations, such as changing start times and end times, hybrid work, and so forth, as is outlined in the Canadian Standards Association Care Accommodating an Inclusive Organization. And this is a standard that was published in 2017 by our research group in partnership with the Canadian Standards Association. If you're at all interested, it's currently available as a complement, complimentary offering on the CSA website. And it also comes with a handbook or an implementation guide, which has a number of different case studies that allow workplaces to basically metamorphize and transition to being care-friendly. And as a consequence, workplaces have the potential to enhance care workers' work-life balance, as well as their retention and autonomy, while reducing employers' recruitment and health insurance costs, as clearly it's a win-win for both the employer and the care worker if care-friendly workplaces are put in place. And given that we're talking to a transportation research audience here, one of the more popular accommodations that has been used with some of the very well-resourced employers, such as those in the financial and banking sector, as well as the technological sector and the pharmaceutical sector, are parking spaces close to the entrance and exit doors of the workplace, as this allows, again, the care worker to be able to access their car and get going on the second half of their day with respect to the unpaid care work responsibilities. And our final slide is really just one that thanks you all for your attention. And look, and both Daniel and I look forward to any questions that you may have. And certainly do take the time to visit us at GHW, genderhealthandwork.mcmaster.ca. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And do we have any questions in the audience? Lee, is that a clap or a question?
Again, it's a clap, but I have a question as well.
So be forewarned, if you haven't figured it out, if you clap.
Well, I had a question, so I thought if it's getting mistaken for a question, then I'm okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you both for that. That was excellent. I love seeing time-space geography used for care. That's really interesting. I just had a question. Did you incorporate travel mode in any way? And if not, any thoughts on how that might impact that, like, potential to get places or any considerations of mode?
Yeah, sure. That's a great question. And again, given the challenges we had with recruiting participants to this research, given the intensity of involvement in participation with respect to carrying the GPS unit and being able to fill out the time diary over, again, a three-to-seven-day period, we were able to just recruit individuals who were using their own private car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a feeling they were going out to Mississauga.
But I love the idea of a bicycle. I'm just not sure, again, given that the number-one caregiving task in Canada for care employees caring for adult care recipients is assisted transport, I just don't see the bicycle working out. But I mean, I see it all over the world, being a fabulous, you know, medium for caring kids around. But we're not quite where we need to be with respect to managing adult But we're not quite where we need to be with respect to managing adults. Yeah, great question, though. Anastasio Dardis, again, he's graduated from my lab as a PhD recipient probably about four years ago. And he did look at access to services via public transportation and really examined an accessibility quotient for, again, caregivers caring for adult care recipients. And basically found that, as you would expect, our more suburban and rural areas are very lacking with respect to public transportation access. So this is where, you know, the expensive Ubers and the expensive, you know, taxis often get used. But it's very problematic for people who were transport poor.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. I have a few for you, Allison. If time permits, I'm going to pop them all in the chat so everyone could see them. And then perhaps you could let me know if you have a time. We have about six minutes. If anyone in the audience, though, has a question, in the meantime, please do let us know.
Sure. So Danielle, did you want to give a shot to questions two and three?
Yes, absolutely. I'm going to start with the limitations of the small sample size. Strictly statistically speaking, no, they're not directly generalizable. That said, the results are extremely encouraging, because I think we can see how, not only from a methodological standpoint, the PPA or these types of accessibility measures are an interesting way of quantifying and visualizing spatially in a numerical way, almost, a really big mix of complex factors that impact mobility of care. Not only is the methodology promising, but the results that we have, while not strictly numerically and statistically generalizable, do seem to be following the trend towards what the literature is suggesting. And so that's really encouraging for future studies, perhaps with a larger sample that could therefore end up being statistically generalizable to the greater care work population. As for number two, the results suggesting, what do the results suggest with respect to initiatives to better support care employees at work? We've seen significant differences across various socioeconomic and demographic indicators in the study. And while we didn't directly look at any intersections of some of these in displaying the PPAs themselves, we could certainly appreciate how the intersection of some of these demographic indicators, such as Black and female, could even more greatly show a divide in size of average daily accessibility. And it really does point towards the need for care worker-friendly workplace policies. And some of these, I know Allison mentioned several interesting ones, but the one even that stood out to me when I looked through the policy document from 2017, one of the ones that really stood out was increasing the communication lines between care workers and the supervision group in the organization. So making it okay to have conversations about the burden of care work and allowing these care workers to feel that they won't be punished from their organization by having these extra burdens or having these scheduling issues, perhaps by dealing with these multiple levels of work in their daily lives.
Great. Wonderful job, Danielle. Thank you. And finally, with respect to the first question, with respect to vulnerable populations, you know, we certainly do see some confirmation with respect to females more likely to be constrained, meaning they have less flexibility and more fixity compared to male care workers. And we also see that those individual care workers who have higher earning potential and who have a higher education have, you know, a greater average daily PPA and consequently have a greater flexibility. So, you know, certainly we do have some very clear confirmation around some of these vulnerabilities. But we would really like to increase our sample in future research in order to be able to explore, as Danielle mentioned, some of these intersectional experiences of, for example, being from a minority ethnic group, being female and of low income, to better elucidate, for example, the work that both Leah and Inez so eloquently presented here today. Thanks very much.
Thank you. We have about a minute. If anyone in the audience has a question they haven't asked. If you did, apparently you can put up either your hand question or the clapping, and I will call on you to ask a question. But seeing none for the moment, I would like to thank our speakers very much. Again, I thank our VIP, Inez, for making this concept and field of study possible for us. Thank you all for joining us from across the world. Special thanks to our international guests who stayed up late at night. Masria, I'm calling you out as our number-one fan for getting up in the middle of the night for us. Thank you. Everyone can see Masria. She's showing us a map to show us exactly how far away she is. And it's a whole different world.
Yeah, hopefully we can meet in person somewhere someday.
Well, you know, I'm glad you said that, because that allows me to invite you and everyone else here to please join our committee, AME20 Women and Gender in Transportation at TRB. We will be hoping everything is in person. We will be having an in-person meeting. We are pleased to bring this panel to you. With that, I will close this panel. Thank you, Inez, who just came on the screen again. And I will let the next panel take over the meeting. Thank you, everyone, very, very much.